This meeting in order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Here.
Commissioner Patel.
Here.
Commissioner Ramon.
Here.
Vice Chair Gray.
Here.
Chair Williams.
Here. Will we please stand? The Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Charleston, will you please lead us?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments at this time? No public comments. Any additions or deletions from the agenda? None? Any? No? Thank you. Let's move to item five, the consent calendar. The minutes from our last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Part of the minutes said something that I brought up, or there was a discussion that I started about regional transportation. And I don't remember what that was, I'm sorry.
And you didn't see it in the minutes?
No, it was in the minutes. And that's what... It... I was... I couldn't remember what it was, or maybe if there should be a little bit better explanation as to how it tied into the Verizon project.
What part of the agenda?
It was in the minutes, I think on the second page, I didn't print them out. Commissioner Patel...
For the June 15 meeting, it's on the third page? Yeah, on the third page of the minutes for June 15.
Here, like the fifth paragraph down. Commissioner Patel initiated discussion regarding the regional transportation plan on Archbalden River Road. I don't know if we can go back to listen to the recording and add what was said about it and why it would have pertained.
Does anybody on the commission remember?
I really... I'm embarrassed to say I really don't remember. But my brain's at full overcapacity right now, so when I read it the other day... Could we maybe just check that for its relevance, or?
So you don't... You just don't remember it? There's no correction, or?
Mr. Chair, what we can do is, if you would like, we can continue approving the minutes until we can maybe look at, hear the recording again, and if it's on there, we'll put it back, we'll put it in there, and bring the minutes back for your approval. Would that be okay?
I... Just for the record, I mean, if there was a relevance for it, then I... To me, this sentence doesn't justify why there was... Because it says discussion, so we all talked about something, but I honestly...
So, Mr. Chair, I would recommend that we just, you know, just continue this item to the next meeting.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to continue the minutes until next meeting?
I would make the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll support that, it's a second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Charleston.
Aye.
Commissioner Patel.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramon.
Aye.
Vice Chair Gray.
Aye.
Chair Williams.
Aye.
Motion has been suspended.
Thank you. Item six, public hearing. Project number 15-06023, Cendaro tentative parcel map, number 37046, and revised tentative tract map, number 36775. Do we have a report on that?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Can you turn this up a little bit? Just want to make sure I'm on tape. Yeah, well, we'll have Kanika Kitt give the report, but before I have her do that, I'd just like to let the commission know that tonight is Kanika's last planning commission meeting with us. She's moving on to a new opportunity with the Port of San Diego, which is closer to her home down there. As you know, Kanika's been a real integral part of the planning team here, someone that we've relied on a lot, enjoyed working with, and we wish her well in her new position down there, so I'll let her give both of the presentations tonight. She thought I was going to, and I said, "Well, no, you're still here." So you get to give the presentations. And with that, I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. This project, as before you today, is a request for... It's a project that the commission has seen before, if you recall, it's the Cendaro residential development. It was presented to the commission last year in June, and it was approved by the city council in June 2015. That approval included general plan amendment, a change of zone, to change the zoning to PRD, and also approve of PRD for that development, and also a tentative tract map to allow the subdivision of the site to put in single-family homes. At that time, when it was approved, the project was approved as one whole project, it was... No phasing was anticipated for. We assumed that the entire project would be developed by one builder. This evening, the applicant is requesting to develop the project in four phases. In order to do that, the applicant has applied for a tentative parcel map to subdivide a site from one lot to four different lots. The parcel map will only be for financing and convenient purposes only, so that the developer can sell off individual parcels to different builders, and they would then develop the parcel for the approved tentative map. As part of that, they also submit a revised tentative map to show phasing of that tentative map in four different phases that correspond to the parcel map. Here, it shows the site location, it's at the northwest corner of Limone and Harrison. Here is the site plan of the project that was approved. And here is the proposed tentative parcel map. So, the red line here shows the boundary of the four different parcels, here's parcel one, parcel two, parcel three, and parcel four. Because the applicant doesn't know which parcel will be developed first, the applicant has to provide four different exhibits showing what improvement will be developed with each parcel. But, everything that's highlighted in green here shows that no matter which parcel go first, everything that's colored in green, which include improvement to Limone and Harrison, the trail in Southern California is an east bend, the old, the rec area that's non-gated, that's adjacent to the Southern California east bend, that include exercise station that the public can use when they walk along the trail, and the Blossom Way Park, the two water quality basin, everything that's highlighted here in green will be developed as part of phase one. It doesn't matter regardless of which parcel get developed first. Therefore, the conditions of approval for the tentative map have been revised to include the phasing exhibit and a bonding ledge to ensure that the infrastructure that shown, that was shown highlighted in green, will be developed as part of phase one. And two conditions have also been added to require the applicant to develop the private rec area that's gated, and the other tot lot that's not developed part of phase one, to be developed at certain point of billing permit issuance. Staff recommends that the planning commission provide a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed tentative parcel map and the tentative tract map, the revised tentative tract map, subject to the conditions of approval included in the staff report. Planning commission have the following option, one is to recommend approval with additional changes or added conditions, or continue the public hearing item and direct the applicant or staff to provide additional information or provision to the project, or recommend denial. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available to answer any question from the commission, and the applicant is also here this evening to answer any question from the commission.
Do we have any questions for the staff at this time? Can we hear from the applicant then? Before we open the hearing?
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening, please give us your name.
Patrick Fox. And I'm here with our civil engineer to answer any questions. Throughout the course of the last... Since last June, we've been working on all the file engineering and come to the conclusion that we're able to at least piece all the puzzle, put all the pieces of puzzle together engineering-wise, so that one area can go potential data and the other. And the whole reason that really started this all is really to be flexible enough, a couple reasons, to be flexible enough and poised enough to react to the market. And so we basically took the four different product areas, the six-pack, eight-pack, split into two, and then the front loads, the separate areas were probably be attracted to different builders. That was... That was to give us enough flexibility and also be able to finance properly. And then all it all applies together, the real underlying reason to make it a successful project. To go out and build 312 units at a WAC could be a difficult challenge right now within this market, so this is what I hope is ensure that it will be a successful project. We work with staff to ensure that all the recreational amenities are getting, and all the major off-site improvements are going through this phase. So that's important to know. And if there's any... If you have any questions, we need our main technical engineers here, but that's really the kind of business we're in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for applicant right now at this time?
No, I have staff and applicant.
Yeah. Hi. Always love progress in the city, so thank you for choosing us again, still.
So, coming from the financial world that I do, I guess if you could expand a little bit, a little concerns of... I guess some of the challenges, if you can share, being that part of your motivation to separate these from a financing standpoint, of which in doing such, you will no longer obviously have control over those, and then who... Now we're dealing with four different developers, buyers.
Aside from speaking of financing, the real reason is to break down these units into modules so that the builder can reasonably tackle take on. Take on 312 units, someone will be listening today's complicated weightings work. Getting it down into 63 units, 73 units, 82 units is very durable, and that will allow the project to get quality in the builder. Financing wise, one of the things that we're offering is a great range of house sizes we got in our eight-pack area, as small as I think around 1,350 square feet up to around 2,800 square feet in the front load base one area. When we're down in that lower range like that, we feel, hopefully, we're going to see some raise in the FHA limits, but we feel pretty confident that that those smaller units will be able to afford themselves a quality for the FHA finances, which will help obviously current home buyers.
So is the financing component more for the retail buyer, or for the four different builders that are going to be coming in? I guess I was looking at it more from the commercial side, not from the retail side.
Well, again, it's all market-driven. We feel that it would be difficult to sell it as one large parcel, breaking it, breaking it apart, puts it within a greater pool of business plans for potential homeowners. That's really, I guess you could say, that's a financing, the area to take on those numbers, whereas they could a bigger number of product. What we're looking at right now, just to let you know internally what we're thinking, is well, first of all, where we are with plans, we are, I believe, we're the second time check of almost everything, the offsites in Harrison, Limone, or ready from Liar, at JCSB, and I think we're getting close to the city on that as well. So theoretically, we could be in a position to start building here in a couple of months, maybe no numberish. Our intention is to start in the springtime as a master builder, and this is what we're considering, as a master builder, to go ahead and build out all the lots, put in all the background infrastructure, put in all the recreational amenities, and then what that will do, will take the risk, or if you're a home builder, then we'll come in and make just builder product again, and engage it, and the timing's so important then. We certainly don't want a situation where there's any standard, oh, people standing in the door, looking at the market as such, that that works well with them. Anyway, that's our intention at this point.
So is Stratham intending to actually be the direct builder on any of these four parcels?
At this point, it is being considered, we might. We might build out more and more of the areas ourselves as a home builder. Primarily, what we're going to be is a master builder, where we're seeing everything. We've done similar things, such as Province Ranch, where we, much larger area, of course, in this, where we put in all the infrastructure, and then work with the individual home builders to to build that out and make a good progression, and then be a very, very successful project. Our intention is to do that again here, but we could, if the market gets stronger, in our opinion, we could be home builders in there as well.
Last question, how are the Ontario home sales, or the plethora of products, do you feel is affecting this project?
Well, just to the north of us, across County Line Channel, is a part of this project in Ontario. We are partners of Boots operating on that, and we're starting to see some better numbers in the sales. We're encouraged by what we're seeing in weekly builder reports that are within our project there. It's encouraging, the numbers are going in the right direction, which is up. And so, I... We feel confident that it's all trending in the right direction at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. You have a question?
Okay, well, thank you for those answers, because that does make sense. One of the things that, as I was reading the packet, which gave me a little bit of apprehension was, and I wasn't sure whether this was agreed upon or recommended, if you asked for it, or if the city said, you know, "We're going to do it in four phases, but we don't know what phase is first." And I don't like that being that open-ended like that, because if you look at the projects we've done in the city, other ones like that, we had a hard time with the project, and Joe, you can remember what we went through on Scholarway, where they built the first three phases really quickly, and phases four and five seemed to take forever. And the problem is, and we've tried to get better at this as a city, as we've said, it wouldn't have been so bad if they would have put the block wall up and the sidewalks, and not impeded where people needed to walk to get to school. But they had reason after reason after reason, and for me personally, I felt the reasons were totally inadequate, and when they finished it is because they were done with phase five. I mean, that's when they finished what they needed to finish. So, I look at a project like this and say, there shouldn't be no set order. The houses that should be built first should be closest to the residents on the east side of Harrison, so the... Those phases should go in first.
Yeah, I had a funny issue to that, it's the way we set up the engineering, we had that exact thought in mind, that that the frontload homes right at that corner would be the first phase of construction, and so we set up all of our engineering, the way it's set up today is that that area that the cursor is pointing to, that area was the first phase, in our minds, which necessitated providing a secondary access out over to, through the other areas to the west and down to Limone. We had to come here and then, and then to the north, where the Edisones, north of the Edisones, it is. We needed to provide secondary, that's why you see, what she's pointing to there, that red, the red street looping to the left is because of secondary access requirements, water requirements. And so that's the way we actually planned the engineering, thinking that that would most likely be the first to go. We don't know that, we can't read the market now, and we don't know that that's going to be the case. We hope it's the case, because then it's a lot of stress for me and the civil engineer to replace the sheets and modify the plans, because the way we saw it was like ease and direct pressure on the existing residents right, going from east to west, and then finishing off where the field is to the west of us. That's the way the plans are set today, that's a perfect world, we hope that would happen, to be honest with you. But, at least this... At least this parcel map allows us the opportunity to sell a parcel to a builder without having to sell the whole thing and then buy back, you know, the remainder part that they don't they don't want to build, and there's a lot of potential tax implications and business plan implications and things, that's not the best thing to do. And so, clearly, I hope that's the first area to go, like you're saying, because that will... That will... Well, it's going to get built out anyway, I mean, at some point or another, but we hope it goes that way, but we just can't predict.
And that would be my secondary question to you then, is why can't it be that way? What would it impede the project if you said that needs to be the first phase right there? And, because if they built, and we have experienced this in the city too, where the market fell. Now, it fell severe, so we understand that, but there was a lot of residents were told, "Don't worry, this across the street from you is going to be a house next year." And it was an open field for five or six years. So, you know, I don't anticipate that in the market we're in right now at all, but I'm just saying, if I live in these houses here, I don't want to see something partially done and have to look at that every day when I turn down that street to go to my house. On the other side, if you've got a bare field there, I don't think too many people from the bare field are going to complain.
If it goes the way we think, it will likely go... Well, we can't, I just, we just can't predict which is going to go first. I would hope that's the case, that we get those in first, and for us to say that that first area and that first area alone has to go first to hit all the others, then it puts us in a bit of a bind, because we may we may not have a buyer for that, and it... The area will just continue to remain vacant in the conditions for a long time. We're hoping that that will go first, but if nobody wanted to build that bigger product, higher price, and they wanted to go with the smaller home, the cluster homes, a little better price, and obviously dictated by the market, or their business plan, you know, then that's what gives us a set offer. We want to make it a successful project, for sure, and we've invested quite a bit in it, and I would love to be building this front load of homes, actually to strap the product, but we'll see, we'll be discussing that.
Okay, well, for now, we'll agree to disagree, because homes are selling right now, and they're selling, I mean, I know somebody put their home on the market, and they got more money than they were asking for it in the last week, so we'll have to discuss that before it's over.
Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, to maybe hopefully answer your question, Commissioner Charleston, if you look on all those exhibits, the strip along Harrison is a phase one improvement, no matter what gets built first.
Right.
So, if it would help maybe address your concern, we can clarify that that phase one improvement includes the landscaping, the sidewalk, and the perimeter wall. So those folks on the east side of Harrison, the first thing that gets built, they're going to look at a finished landscape area with the perimeter wall. Houses, you know, as Pat said, I think we expect they'll get built first, but just in case, that would clarify that that whole edge, and then the whole edge along Limone as well, that all gets finished in phase one, no matter what gets built first, so if that maybe helps address your concern.
That was, thank you, because one of my questions was, is that there's like five things listed that happened in phase one, but it didn't mention sidewalks, landscaping, or block wall.
Yeah, and we can...
We have talked about that on quite a few projects.
Yeah, and we can certainly clarify that in the conditions, and Pat, if that's something you guys would agree to.
Okay.
Our intention, that's where the plans are set, we complete the whole half with both those streets, all with condition, including decorative block wall, all of the landscaping.
Okay.
Even cemetery monumentation as well.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
From this discussion, I'm assuming that the smaller square footage residences are probably a better marketing, have a better market today than the larger ones, is that, am I reading that correctly?
Well, yeah. Best price usually, you know, just goes quicker.
Okay, my concern is that is that on phase one, if that's the number it is, where the larger square footage is, and you can't get it sold, because that market is weak. Are we going to get somebody coming in here trying to put in higher density? Is there a possibility that on phase one, and you can't get it sold, but you can sell it to somebody who wants to put apartments in there? I don't, I don't want that to happen.
No, I... This is all approved as one PRD, one map. There will be multiple phase maps relative to that, but everything tied to the PRD guidelines and requirements, I think that make that very unlikely.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, the project is approved the way you see it, so to do anything else, we'd have to come back through the commission and the council to get all of that changed.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay, I've got one more question.
Actually, it was sort of along the lines of Bill's question. I know we did change this parcel to, or this project to a higher density before. Do you see that happening, or are the new builders coming in to request any changes due to the market?
No.
That's it, huh? Okay, at this time, I think we should open the public hearing. We can hold it up till after. So, we open the public hearing. Do we have anybody that wants to comment on this proposal? With no comments, then we will close the public hearing. That was quick, I like this. So, let's go on, do we have some comments in our... Gary, you have something you wanted to say?
I guess from... I can ask staff. Is your view this request being more of a reaction to market and demand, or more convenience for the builder?
Well, I think it allows the builder the convenience to respond to changes in demand. But, really, this is something that we would have typically seen with the first proposal. It wasn't included in the original proposal, but I think if you look back over the history of all the subdivisions in town, most of them were approved in a phased way that would have allowed them to do this. This is just kind of cleaning up something that normally would have come in with the first proposal. But it's not at all uncommon to see projects come in and be approved in a way that they can be built in phases.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Maybe I can answer that question. I've... I will work for, I used to work for an MLS, so I see the data all the time. I was there up until a couple of months ago, so year over year, everything has improved, going in the right direction, however, recently, there's been sort of a slowdown in the last year, year and a half, almost two. So prices have gone very high, and it's sort of stagnant, and you got other factors I won't get into, but mainly, I believe, from the numbers I've seen, is basically due to the market slowing down a bit, and the builders may need some flexibility on how they go forward. So, that's what I've seen.
Commissioners, anything else?
No.
I have a question, and I don't know why I'm thinking of it now. But since there's builders here, I can add the staff. When houses are planned, do they have a hot water circulating pump in them? Is that a requirement? I've never read it in a condition of approval. But in the day of trying to conserve water, if you have to run the water, run the cold, hot water for five minutes before you get hot water, you're better off having a circulating pump.
I used to have one of those, I'd put it on top of your water heater, send it everywhere, mine, it was on a timer, it never worked, I had to... The new total 24 requirements, I think across the board, I know the way we see it, and across the board, is requiring builders to put install a tankless water heaters that are on demand all day, where they're not storing water and boiling it all day long.
Okay.
Those days are gone. That's one of the things, along with the radiant barrier, I mean, that just in the last five years, the energy requirements have really amped up heavy, even all for energy conservation, especially water. And so, all the homes here that we have designed conceptually, that they all, in fact, where do you put the water heater? When you're putting, putting a big house on a small lot, where you put the trash cans, where you put the water heaters, all these things come up, and, you know, and the way that we could get cars to leave the minimum parking area, get the minimum area unencroached within their garage, those go with tankless water heaters, but... within that garage, those would go with tankless water heaters, but we're being forced to do it anyway by, by state's hand.
Okay. Actually, this came, came to thought to me when I was taking a shower this, this, tonight, and I had to wait for the hot water. At the other end of the house, it's okay, but by the end, it's not.
They work pretty good in the whole house, the low one you see in the restroom, I don't know, bathroom, restroom, they, they just don't quite do it, or in your office, but they just don't quite do it, but the whole house, we, we're very good.
Okay, I have a question for, it could be staff or, or the applicant. Which developer will be responsible for the infrastructure improvements required by this development? And each one, it's, there's a lot of improvements that are required by the first phase, whichever that might be, depending on which developer, which we don't know who that is. So, who will be responsible in the long run for making sure that gets done?
Well, we, Planning and Public Works will be responsible for making sure it gets done, but in terms of doing it, whoever builds the first phase does all the green stuff, and then whatever is associated with each individual phase. And then, as the other phases go through, well, the green stuff is already done, they don't have to worry about that, and anything that was done by a preceding developer, they don't have to do. So, let's take the red example here. So, the red, the second piece there, so they build all the green stuff, they build all the red stuff. So, if you go up now to the blue one, the road that comes in from Harrison, up through the, go up to the, to the blue one, Kanika.
Oh.
So, that road there, that comes in from Harrison across the Edison easement, well, that's already built. And the road that goes across the Edison easement down south, and then up and over, and then down to Limonite, that's already been done by the red guy, so the blue guy does not have to build it if he goes second. So, that's how those four colors kind of fit together.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I'm worried about the green stuff.
Whoever does-
Now, will that discourage the first person to do Phase One, or are they all gonna share in the cost?
Well, I think what we heard Mr. Potts say is that Stratham intends to do that.
So, that's what I'm, that's the point I'm getting at.
Yeah.
So, who's, Stratham is going to build the improvements?
Yes.
The perimeter wall, the sidewalks, the landscaping, the widening of Harrison, Limonite.
We're, we're commonly being a massive builder, yes. If one builder came along and wanted the red area, he got to build the green too, he would bond for all those improvements, and then we have a condition, a bonding caveat, it's part of our conditions, that speak to ongoing, continuing bonding coverage for all those improvements, say, for example, that, that the guy in the red, he builds his homes, he caps the streets within his area that doesn't cap the balance, because it's in the, the other tracks that have to be built. They're required by responding to that, and we're recording against the land, there's a, there's a mechanism in there where they will be responsible for replacing that bond or when they record their maps, so there will always be continuous ongoing bonding. It's a little bit complicated, it's a little bit over, but since we don't know who's going, we've ensured, we work very close with Public Works to have a, a mechanism, fairly precedent setting one, I'm thinking, that will, will, it spells out, I think, eight or 10 different sections that could be shared by two different builders, ensure that there will be bonding of that and ultimately be approved, so. So, we're not gonna, there won't be any, the city won't let tie and draw for one builder decides a leaving area and not finish off the rest of that street. Who will be somebody responsible for it?
So, with the language in the agreement specifies that Stratham will do the green section?
No. Whoever, whoever does the first phase does it, whether that's Stratham or anybody else, but that has to get done with the first phase.
So...
And I think maybe Mr. Potts can expand on this, but my understanding is that when you're doing something like this, the first guy in has a lot of upfront costs, that he's gonna recoup from the later phases, whether through some separate agreement or just through the price of the land, because those guys are taking advantage of the infrastructure that the first guy has built, I don't know if you wanna talk about that.
Yeah, that's exactly right, to expect to sell it, one small, one fourth of this development, and expect that one fourth builder to build all these other amended recreational amenities and offset improvements we would have acquired.
Right.
So, we, we take care of that in our structure deal with that, that it's a shared cost, everybody that's-
It will be recouped in the future.
...of your cost, given the land cost, that it is what, it doesn't include that.
That is a lot of upfront cost, though.
It's a share proportionally, right?
That is a lot of upfront-
Yeah, Harrison, Limonite, these are major, especially Limonite's a major improvement. The other Desi Easement, not so much, it's gonna, it's gonna be basically a multipurpose trail like was done at the D R R project, like the drills, similar to that. But we are, I think it's important to know that, first, again, we're gonna have, as Kanika mentioned, we're gonna have a park building in Harrison, we're gonna have the basketball court, true area, park course, open play area where the pool will be eventually, that goes in first, and, and other park where stations are gonna go in. So, there's gonna be recreational amenities on the gecko. The only recreational amenity that, rather, which too, the top lot comes in after the 80, I think it's before the 83, for bed, that's an dash one area, that will have to be, be built before that, more than likely, that builder, the red area, the dash one will be building that top lot, so it's likely, it's likely gonna be before, because that's gonna be marking, you should be willing to have that. So, I, I see that as getting built, at least we have the flexibility, it doesn't have to be built from the gecko. And then the pool, it's not gonna be a public facility, it's gonna be a private HOA, only for the people that live in this project. The others are all gonna be accessible to the public, and so it's good to get those online quicker. J C S D, we'll work with them, they'll be the maintaining agency for that, and so it's, it's, we have multiple points of access, it's gonna offer a bunch of public amenities that aren't in that area now, and they're gonna all get online first.
Thank you. Okay, do you have another question?
Just for staff, it's showing, just in case it's a cut in pace, this shows northeast and it's northwest, Limonite, Harrison, on the agenda, so I don't know what the final resolution looks like, but it's northwest.
That one says northeast and northwest.
We'll make sure that reads correctly in the council resolutions.
Thank you. Okay, how do we undo this? One item at a time, or should we just do it as a blanket?
You can do both at one time.
Both at one time?
Yeah.
So, if there aren't any other comments or questions, we have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the project with additional changes and conditions. Now, does that recommendation have to specifically say that we're talking about landscaping, block wall, sidewalks, in Phase One?
I think if you'd like to, sir, your motion should include revising the recommended conditions of approval to include those specific items.
Yeah, I would like it to include that, then, please.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay, just to clarify, your motion is to approve the tentative parcel map, number 37046, and to approve the revised tentative tract map, number 36775?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
With the-
I say, let's make sure we understand what, with what additions we're including.
Yes, yes, we're gonna add that condition along with approval.
So, your motion includes adding those specific items, the landscaping, sidewalk, and block wall, to be included in the Phase One improvements?
Yes.
Okay.
Eric, in looking at the table, we would also like to request to add street light, bus stop, bus shelter, traffic signal along Harrison and Limonite, whatever is needed, to complete the entire right of way along Limonite and Harrison, because the table does provide, says that improvement on Limonite and Harrison would only be done curb to curb, so that would need to have to be revised.
Agreed.
For City Council.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel, seconds, huh? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Redmond?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fady?
Aye.
Chair Boyer?
Aye.
Motion passes by zero.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Good luck.
All right, let's go on to item 6.2, project number 1600015, extension of time for the tentative tract map, number 35751. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, Kanika will get that presentation as well.
Presentation.
You're gonna go out with a bang, come on.
You gotta work for your money here, honey.
It's my last day, it is a bittersweet move for me. Top boy's very sad, actually, that's why he's hiding. The request before you this evening is a request for a one-year time extension to tentative tract map 3571. This request is to allow the applicant to have more time to pursue development of the site. The map was originally approved by the County of Riverside back in 2009, and it is due to expire at the end of, in October of this year, 2016. Again, the map was approved by the county in 2009, that approval allowed the site to be subdivided into 22 residential lot and two open space lot, and also allow for a future development of 243 residential units. The approved, the development plan approval by the county has already expired, and that is no longer in effect, and if they want to put in the unit, the condo units, they will have to come back and apply for a development plan review with the city. The county also approved a change of zone, to change the zone from agricultural to residential, subject to cancellation of the agricultural preserve on the site. That change of zone has not been finalized yet, because we need to prove documentation for cancellation of the ag preserve. The sister project site here is south of Shyamans and east of Cucamonga Creek, specifically, it is the empty vacant land behind the mayor's home. Here's the mayor's home right here, this is the project site. Here is exhibit of the tenant track map showing how the lot would be divided and the potential location of the condo units. Generally, recordation of final map required the applicant to construct or bond for facility, which then make the applicant typically delay the project until the site is ready for development, which is in this case. This map, that's before you, this evening, has already received two automatic extension that was granted by state legislature, so the time, the request for a time extension this evening is a discretionary review by the city, so the city would have the ability to decide, decide to whether approve or deny the map. Staff would like to include a conditions of approval, add a condition to the conditions of approval for the map, to require the applicant to provide proof of cancellation of the ag preserve. This is needed to finalize the change of zone to take effect, and it's needed for the tenant map to be consistent with the zoning. Therefore, staff recommend that the planning commission provide a recommendation to City Council to approve the one-year time extension, subject to the revised conditions of approval. If the extension is not approved, the map will expire, and applicant would need to make, to apply for a new application. The plan have the option to recommend approval with additional condition added to what staff has recommended, or continue the public hearing and direct applicant to provide additional information, or recommend denial of the extension of time. The applicant is here this evening to answer any question from the commission, and this concludes staff presentation.
I have a question. Do I have to abstain?
Where are you?
I live right there.
He's at the enclave.
Like, if you pull up the map, east side of that, of the border, I don't know, maybe at the top, closer to the mayor's house, I'm, I'm one of those houses right by the border.
One with the big swimming pool, is that you?
Are you 600 feet, or 500 feet?
Yes. I, I can, I basically, I can hop the wall and get onto that property.
Okay, Commissioner, just, just to be cautious, I don't know all the facts of this, and we should discuss this prior to the meeting in the future for all of you, but in this particular case, I would recommend that you recuse yourself.
I did send an email that nobody responded to me regarding this.
Does he have to leave the room?
You can send those emails directly to me.
Should he leave the room, or does he just need to recuse himself at both?
He needs to step down.
Okay. He needs to step down.
Don't go away mad.
Okay. Okay, are they, is the applicant here today?
Yes, he's here.
Would you like to speak on your behalf? Give us your name and who you work for?
Yes, good evening, my name is Glenn Brosby, I'm with Lewis Management Corp. I want to thank staff, in particular Kanika, I did realize that during last day, there was quite a bit of work to get this pulled together, particularly with the prior county approval, so I appreciate that, and basically, we are in a position where we've just been waiting for the market to, to come back around here, and we are a developer, we're not a home builder. As the gentleman mentioned a little bit earlier, the fireplace market seems to be getting some traction, which is a real good sign. We were hit earlier this year, that's, over a lot of projects, with the increase in the water and sewer capacity charges, which was another significant hit, just kind of starting to, to come out and get moving in the region. But we had originally planned on going to market in November, that had been pushed out to April, and that's what some of this is planned at this time, so we're just requesting some additional time to allow our visit plan to take shape, and the additional condition is acceptable, I understand, the concern, making sure that the act is, is expired, we provide that documentation well, well ahead of map reservation. Any additional questions that you have?
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions? Chair?
I, I didn't see, is it not this parcel that is building, responsible for the expansion of Schleisman? With, with the bridge, and then it kind of stops? This project is responsible for that, yes?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, delaying this pri, or granting an extension would also grant, in essence, an extension of the roadway infrastructure improvements?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it does, but if you don't grant the extension and the map expires, they would have to come back through the process with another map, which would then be conditioned to provide those improvements. So, in a way, you're facilitating a faster improvement of Schleisman by extending this map.
Okay. Fine.
I only have one question for staff, so when we put the examples up there where we talk about that it's changing from, you know, agriculture to R3, but we need to keep, take into consideration that it will definitely be changed from agriculture, why is it mentioned like that two different times? So, if it was already done originally with the county, and we approved that, and it was approved, and we say it's good, and this is just a simple, you know, extension, why are we talking about zoning, if zoning is not even coming into play?
The issue is that, at the county, when they approve the change of zone, they put a condition to require that cancellation. Now, this site is shown on our zoning map as agricultural. If we don't finalize that zoning, the zoning has been approved, it's just that we need to update our map. We don't update our map until we know that the site has been canceled from the ag preserve, so that change of zone need to take effect so that the map is consistent with the zone.
Okay, so, so my question is then, as we approve an extension, we have to go in and make sure the zoning is, stays correct at the same time? Is that, that's kind of what I'm asking?
Yeah, this one is really a little bit, little bit non-standard. Normally, the zone change would take effect when the council approves it. What happened here was that they're in an ag preserve, and we can't rezone, you can't have land in an ag preserve that's not in an ag zone. That's why the ag preserve has to go away before the zoning can change. Now that the zoning changes, they can record the map. So, the county approved everything, but you have to back up a couple steps, they say, "Okay, you got your zoning, but not until the ag preserve goes away." So, the zoning has been approved, but there's a condition on the zoning that the ag preserve has to go away, and they have to prove that that happened. Now the zoning lands on the map, now they, on the zoning map, now they can record their subdivision.
Okay, I just want to be sure what, it's not just a simple, "Things are great, let's just extend one year," is what I want to make sure we're approving. That's it? If that's, I'm, I'm okay with that, I just want to make sure I understand what we're saying yes to.
Bill?
That Williamson Act contract was not taken out 10 years before?
It's actually, it expired in January, so I, we do have the documentation already, it was, it was expired in January this year, so if you ran a title report today, it's no longer to comment on the property, but I'll provide that documentation so that you have that file.
Okay, all right. It, it just amazes me that, that they didn't take that out 20 years ago. I mean, I, I was part of this ag community, and we were told 20 years ago- I mean, I, I was part of this ag community, and we were told 20 years ago, take it out now, because you're going to have a problem later down the road. And I was surprised that they didn't pull that one out.
Yeah, I cannot speak to the prior owner of the property, why they didn't proceed with that direction. I saw some documents in the file way back that indicated some of that dialogue. For whatever reason, the family did not do that, so it was processed later as due course, and it has expired. But, you know, as you know, during that time, if anybody wanted to try and get out of it, they would have to buy their way out.
Yeah, it was costly, it was costly. But, you know, and the reason they didn't do it, because the tax started going up as you went along, over that 10-year period, so. Although it really made no difference after Prop 13 happened, should have just got out, it didn't make any sense. All right.
All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions for staff. Does this project help meet the city's requirements for affordable housing?
Uh, no, sir, it's not dense enough. It, it meets part of our requirement, but not that high-density requirement.
Not the high-density?
No.
Okay. Because it is apartments that's supposedly going in, right?
They would be attached units that, I think they're intending to sell as condominiums, so it'd be a for-sale product.
Okay, good, all right. And we mentioned that the project will do some of the infrastructure improvements on Schleisman. Will that include in front of the residential property in front of that?
Yes, sir.
That will include that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to grant this extension? Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we grant the extension of time for tentative tract map 35751.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I have a second, but I have a question.
Do you have a question before we second it?
Well, I'll, no, no making any difference.
Go ahead, before we second it, go ahead.
Okay, I'll second it.
What's your question?
The question is, is there a time, does this give you a time length? The extension?
One year? One year.
It's one year, okay. Yeah.
You second?
I second.
Okay, Bill seconds. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Charleston?
Aye.
Commissioner Patel?
Aye.
Commissioner Van Luin?
Aye.
Chair Boyer?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Good luck.
Okay. Staff report, do we have any staff reports?
Well, sir, I appreciate the kind words for our project status report. The one that's in your package is actually last month's. There's a new one that we're finishing off tomorrow to be included in next week's council package, so you can find it there, or we'll send it to you directly. You'll see a lot of updates to things, there's a lot of activity happening out there, some of which we can't, can't reveal yet, but some very exciting things coming down the pike.
Very good. There's a lot of stuff in that one, too.
Can, can we, was there a reason that we didn't get it emailed and only in paper?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. As you know, our, our city clerk has left us for another city. Margot Wentz at the front is doing a yeoman's job of picking up everything that he was doing, and that was just one thing that we missed, so apologize for that, and we'll-
Okay.
-take care of that next time.
When, when did that happen?
Uh, Mark's been gone for a couple of weeks now.
Oh, when I was gone.
Yeah, he's in-
Just at election time.
He's at the City of Rosemead, which means he's probably still driving home in traffic.
Well, good for him.
Yeah. But we do apologize for that, and that was just one thing that, that got missed, so.
Any others?
Yes, at this time, we do not have any items for a September planning commission meeting. We'll let you know about that if something comes up, but at the moment, we don't.
Okay, so the, the, we did get an email that said the meeting would be on September 21st.
If we have some items, we will get them to you at that meeting, but at the moment, we don't.
Okay.
I'm expecting an application to come in that may be ready for that meeting, but we'll let you know.
Uh, we, we tabled a workshop on public hearings. I wonder if that could ever come back before us?
That certainly will. Actually, I think we forgot about that for this meeting. But we will bring that back. It's already done, we just need to crank it up and do it.
Thank you. Any other staff reports? None?
No, other than, again, to wish Kanika well in her future endeavors, and she will be back.
Yes.
We're going to miss her.
She'll be back.
So, what's your commute time now?
15 minutes. On local street.
You only came to the city once a month, once a weekend.
Yeah, so that's why it was a very hard decision, to be honest with you. I gave Eric the letter of resigning way before I even told the port I was going to join them. Just to create some separation. And I just barely submitted my paperwork to the port yesterday, so still going through all the background reference check. But I had to give that letter to Eric first, and it took me, I think, about a week or two to finally decide to join the port. So, I just, it was a very tough decision.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And, and I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, before, I forget, to Kanika's right is Yvette Noir. Now, you may have seen Yvette here, she's been working on projects in Eastvale for a couple of years or so. Sometimes on the environmental side, sometimes writing staff reports. She'll be taking up a lot of the slack that's, that Kanika is leaving, so you'll see her more frequently. She'll be working on more projects here and making presentations to the commission, so we welcome her aboard in just an expanded role from what she's already been doing in the past.
Great, welcome.
And to your direct right?
We're an easy bunch.
And to your direct right?
To my right?
Yes.
Oh. Well, this is Jessica. Jessica is generally here in Margot's place to run the meetings for us, to take the minutes and record your votes.
I know she's been here a year, but this was the first time I've seen her.
We've never introduced her? Well, there she is.
You got a, you got a bad arm.
Yeah, she's one of those people that calm on the surface, and there's all kinds of stuff going on.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Communication.
No, just, nothing, we're okay.
No, not at this time. I need to meet, but I do want to put a note in there that I need to meet with our code enforcement officer, because some, a couple of things that have been going on, she, I asked her, I said, why don't we have more impact on these? And she said, it's a language issue. And since I haven't met with her, and it's some of the things that a lot of our residents complain about. Commercial vehicles, there's a difference when a trailer is sitting versus when it's connected to a vehicle, and then it becomes something to do with the sheriff's department and vehicle code instead of code enforcement, if they leave it connected, and all they have to do is move the vehicle every three days. So, she had a couple of suggestions for me, that she said really could go to council, but I haven't, I've been very busy, I haven't met with her, but I really need to do that. So, I, I would appreciate a little bit of her time to make sure I understand, not to create too much of a menace, but to be able to give her a little more enforcement abilities to make our, our residents happy.
Mr. Chairman, we should probably bring in our other commissioner.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we're missing somebody.
I think he took off.
No, he's still got his stuff here, so. I got dibs on it if he leaves.
Yeah, he's thinking that this was a long. You guys really debated that one.
Don't, yeah, don't tell him.
You have to build a higher wall.
Everybody except me forgot that.
Bill, do you have any?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. How far is the Amazon, are they ready to operate? Are we going to have a open house come and take a look at what they're doing in there?
You know, I can't answer the second part, we can probably get you in there if you'd like to look. But they're already operating.
Well, they are operating.
The southern half of the building is, is up and running, and they're now installing all the infrastructure in the northern half, and then they'll occupy that probably in another month or so. But they're already operating out of the southern half of the building.
You ever get a chance to twist an arm there, I'd kind of like to see what's going on inside that building.
I will send a note over to Goodman and Amazon, we'll get you in there.
Because I know they, somebody posted some stuff on Facebook that they were there.
That's right.
And some of us didn't get that invite, so.
You'll be next.
Just saying.
Pass the mic.
Hey, Howard, do you have anything? Communication?
Nope. Well, it was giving me an opportunity to catch some Pokemons out there, but. Oh, man, we need to, we need to look into Poki stops. I was talking to Joe, Councilman Tesari. Like, maybe with the future Leo project and other areas of retail, and the shops, they have tons of Poki stops, and their business and foot traffic has increased.
Over in Sino Hills?
Yeah.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
It's okay, don't, don't waste your time.
Well, I know from personal experience, I go there, and, you know, when I have time, and I'm stopping off at the, you know, the, the tea shop, the coffee shop, you know, people get hungry, and then they go to that area and buy food to eat, so tracks a lot of foot traffic.
It's a draw, it is. That's it?
Oh, and they give discounts to the teams that you're on, too.
I have one thing to mention, and I, I was told to bring it up at the planning commission meeting, and to look into the possibility of changing the ordinances in the city to allow safe and sane fireworks on the Fourth of July. If there's any way we could look into that, or see what it would take. I think our city's at the point now where the fire danger is at a minimal, and it would not be a bad idea to allow fireworks in Eastvale. It would be a great vehicle for fundraiser, for youth groups and nonprofits, and it gives a chance for the community to do something on the Fourth of July in celebrating the birth of our nation. So, with that said, if there are any other comments, you'll adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
It's been fun.